Foxborough regular meeting tonight, April 6th, 2015. We'll begin as always with visitors, followed by approval of minutes. Teaching and learning highlights, which will feature our drama club and theater at the high school. Foxborough Alumni Association presentation. Update on elementary report cards. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Coordinated Program Review Report. The By County Collaborative Quarterly Update for March 2015. The school committee vote to approve the Foxborough Public Schools Policy Manual. And then we'll take any other matters. Now, just before we begin, Mr. Yuden did inform me just about an hour ago that he has a personal family situation, health situation going on, so we just want to wish him the best with what he's dealing with, so he's not going to be able to join us tonight. With that, do we have any visitors who want to be recognized?
Yes.
Yes, we do. State your name, please.
My name is Joe Garrity, and I'm a student at Foxborough High School. And then I'm here to tell about the experience, my Washington studentship, so you guys can improve these trips later in the future.
That's right. Because the school committee approves overnight travel.
Yep.
That's right.
Yep, and then Friday, we drove down, we got there like at 3:00, and then we just, like a travel day, and then was... And then Saturday, we went to go to tour DC, went to the Air and Space Museum in Virginia. Then we went to the memorials, like on the DC tour, we went to Virginia a little bit, too. Because it was over the bridge, Washington DC and Virginia. And then after the air and space, we went to Spy Museum, and then, then on Sunday, we went to the Smithsonian's. Museums at all, at the mall. Yep, and then went to Mount Vernon in Virginia. Then we went to like memorials, then the bus had mechanical problems. The only memorial we didn't get to go to was the Jefferson Memorial. That's when it started, not too bad. And we still got to go to the Capitol on Monday. We went, the Monday was the Capitol. We went to every memorial on Sunday except for the last Jefferson one. We went to, we had a good time, it was just so late on that night. And then Monday, we went to the Capitol House. We didn't get a White House tour because there was something going on at the White House. But we got a picture in front of it on Saturday. And then after the White House, then we went to the Capitol House, and we drove home, then we had bus problems in New Jersey.
Right.
So then we were, we stuck there for like three or four hours. And then we went, and we didn't get, I didn't get home until Tuesday, the 24th, at 2:00 AM.
I know.
And leave New Jersey till 8:30, then got in New York City at 10 o'clock. Then we were heading to there, then I got a coin that said the World Trade Center at the stop. You know those two quarters and penny? And the Statue of Liberty coin? And then we went, oh my god, I still went to school, some kids didn't go to school. I still went. We were supposed to get home at 8:00 or 9:00 at night.
So, Joe, when we talked about this, and we talked about the importance of these overnight travel trips, and why they have to be carefully considered, I asked you, what's like the one or two best things about that trip from your experience? And then we'll wrap it up.
One was the warm weather.
That's good.
And two, I've been dying to go down there.
I know. So what was the best thing of all the things you saw?
Mount Vernon, the Air and Space Museum, the Capitol Building, and the memorials.
It's a pretty big trip.
It was a great trip.
Yeah, my least favorite one was the Spy Museum.
Oh, okay.
But I liked it still.
Well, thank you.
And then also in the store, in the gift shop, the funniest thing I found in there was a fire bomb, and I was thinking of bringing it to school for April Fool's Day by dinner.
It's a very wise decision.
But we discussed that.
What?
We discussed that, right?
Yeah.
So, Joe, you recommend we keep approving trips like this?
Yeah, and away from the state.
Away from the, especially in the winter time?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Perfect message.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have any other visitors who'd like to be recognized at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to approval of minutes. Regular meeting minutes, March 16th.
I had no changes to these minutes.
I had no additions or corrections either.
Nor did I. Motion to accept.
I'll motion to accept the moment, the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor? 3-0. Thank you. Okay. Teaching and learning highlights, Foxborough High School Drama Club and Theater.
Yes, so come on up. We have two of our three theater club advisors, Mr. Jim Callahan and Ms. Elizabeth Matronik. And we have Katie Burke. We might possibly be joined by one or two other theater students who might be able to come, I'm not sure if they do. One is our own Mikel Enriquez. So, they're here to talk about their theater experience this year at the high school, in drama club, and they've been doing some unique things as well that we haven't experienced. So I'm just going to turn it right over to them.
Okay. Yeah, this year, we are new advisors to the club, and we want to change the general tenor of the club by taking on some challenging plays, focusing on development of appreciation of the craft work that goes behind a successful drama production. So a number of changes came along when taking over as advisors to the club, and a lot's been learned in the process this year. We decided to go for evening practices, usually it's after school, but that's always catches, as catch can with kids, all going in different directions, you know, seeing teachers or playing sports. So we figured, let's try to have it in the evenings. And that's worked out pretty well. You know, we improved continuity and attendance for our practices, and it seemed to work out very well for all the kids involved as well. It made, some late pickups for the parents unfortunately, but I think they go along with it with no problem. Second, we brought in Jared Craig, as we mentioned, he's at this moment touring somewhere in France as an actor. So he's really good with the kids as far as directing the plays and getting them involved into the roles that they're playing. He's done an outstanding job directing and preparing both the cast and crew, and creating our two style productions, I think, this year that we took on. Our fall production was The Doll's House by Einar Ibsen, and it was very challenging, but it was excellent, I thought it was well done. And the kids really rose to the occasion, given the short time of not knowing each other, too. That took some time to kind of understand where we're coming from, and it worked out very well. The third thing goes along with the second play that we did was, we decided to participate in the Massachusetts Educators Theater Festival. And that took place in, at the end of February, in Attleboro. And I know the middle school had done this before, and so we picked up on and kind of continued, you know, what they were doing. And it was really a great experience. I mean, you have six other high schools there, it's an all-day affair, similar to what the music program does, I'm sure, with some of their festivals. And they each do a one-act play. So you're there for 40 minutes on stage, you do your, and our play was part of Good Night Desdemona, Good Night Desdemona, Good Morning Juliet. It was a scaled-down version, and it went very well, and it was interesting and it was fun. But to see the other schools and what they produce, and what they bring to the table, and just the encouragement you get from all the kids, is a long day, but is really a fun time. And we actually walked away with a couple All-Star Company Acting Awards, including our own Mikel Enriquez here, as well. And so that worked out very well. And we continue participating, and even though we didn't get on to the next round, because there is a statewide tournament, or festival, I should say, not a tournament. But we're looking forward to trying to do this next year again, and maybe having success with it as far as moving on to the next round. And the kids are really encouraged by this as well. We have a young group, we have a dedicated group, and we really think we're going to do some fun things in the coming years. We're not done this year yet, though. We still have a couple events going on. Kids are trying to raise some money right now, selling chocolates, which surprisingly is no problem. Selling chocolates to kids in school, right?
Not very surprising. People will throw their money at you to get that chocolate.
It's not, it's just the students, teachers, too, so don't know.
I personally bought five bars from Katie, actually.
There you go. There you go. And the idea is that we're going to use this money to set up a murder mystery dinner theater on May 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, right here at the high school.
Directed by?
Directed by.
Excellent timing.
So, a student-run production, we're going to help out with that. But again, something a little different, and something to hopefully create some interest within the community. And lastly, we'll make some connections with the middle school, as the kids are coming up to the high school to see what we're trying to do here, and get them involved in what we're doing. So we have a day for that set aside sometime in June. Time is running out, but again, I think things are really going very well this year. It's been a great experience. Beginning to know you stage is basically over with, we kind of understand where we're going, and we're kind of excited about what's happened with the drama club. And anything else you want to add?
Well, I just think it's been really remarkable what we've seen the students learn this year. We've certainly seen them learn acting skills, but we've also seen them learn some really practical skills. In the fall, I think there were six different teenage boys that I taught how to use a hammer, because they did not yet know. And it's a useful thing to know, but they're also learning basic skills, like they're running their own fundraisers. We show up and say, oh, well, let's listen to what it is that you're doing. That sounds like a solid plan, you've already got this figured out. They're making steps forward in figuring out budgeting, and the practical aspects of running a theater, be it a theater club in a high school, or a theater somewhere else. I think it's nice to see them growing on many fronts.
Katie, you want to add anything about your experience so far?
Um, I feel like, like what Ms. Matronik said, we've learned a lot during the past few, well, not the, well, the past few months. And I was not, I personally was not here for The Doll's House, I was doing cheerleading. But I know that during Good Night Desdemona, Good Morning Juliet, I feel like Jared definitely taught us a lot, and so did Ms. Matronik and Mr. Callahan, not just in acting, and I definitely learned a lot about acting this year, but also just sort of how to do a bunch of stuff. There's nothing really specific. I know, I know that's not very specific and kind of random, but...
It's like running a business, but also being a...
Yeah, well, that's the whole thing, we, you know, we are self-sustaining, it's easy to spend money, but it's sometimes harder to make the money. So we, you know, we're trying to also get more people involved in seeing our shows as well, so that's another thing we have to work on next year. This year, we're just trying to get things near our feet, you know, under us. And now we want to reach out to the community, larger community of Foxborough a bit more, and getting some more parents involved as well in our program, getting donations for sets and props, so that the kids can make that connection to the community, but also give back and show some pride in what we're doing here in the community, too. And trying to make it something that people want to see, you know? Because it is a fun thing to do, and it's really, you know, it's, you know, the energy level's there, and then you get, you get through it, and then, okay, can we do this again? Yes, we can. And we ramp up back again, and with the weather, we had the problems, and, you know, losing to, I don't have to explain that to you guys, how much time we lost. But yeah, we got together, and they, they were dedicated enough to come through in February vacation, spend four days of the vacation here, for, you know, five hours a day sometimes, getting ready for that show in Attleboro at the end of February. So I was very proud of what we've done this year, and I'm really looking forward to going forward.
I attended both, I thought both productions were excellent.
Thank you.
And I think one of our next goals should be to get more community members to show up, because they were really outstanding and really high quality. I want to make sure we recognize one of the individual acting award winners at the Theater Festival, Mikel.
Again.
And Abby Speer was the other one, is that correct?
Yes, correct, correct.
So...
Let's not.
Let's not, not, have you weigh in?
Yeah, sorry for running late, except Symphony Orchestra before Mondays. But I personally have loved the direction this drama club has been going, and being present this year has honestly been one of the greatest things I've done this year. Being part of, like, watching the drama club grow, and being part of the behind-the-scenes, and making decisions, like, I got to pick the play, I got to, I'm directing it now. That's not something that every high school student can say they're doing in their high school career, you know? I'm being, being in charge of a group of kids, and being in charge of, like, the acting for this next play, it's really like my project, and along with my friend Sarah Spillane, who's helping me out a lot. And it's also, you learn so much about, not just leadership, but also organizing, like, me and Sarah, we organized the fundraiser for chocolate, you know, alongside with Mr. Callahan, Ms. Matronik's help, but they were kind of more guiding us along and supplying, like, if we needed money, or we needed, like, a meeting or something, and we were kind of running behind the scenes. So you learn a lot on organization, running, like, how to lead people, and how to, like, clarify things. And also, I'm excited to see, like, what I learned for myself, I love acting, which is, I won't be acting in the next play, because I'll direct, I'll be directing it, but I'm excited to see where that takes my acting career, coming from a different side, and having to, like, see that, like, see what can improve acting-wise. Now, that's probably going to help me when I act in the next plays. But I think also, the way the drama club has changed, it's more focused and kind of centered in, like, learning how to act and learning the art. And I think, especially going on this year's, the festival trip, that has taught us a lot in respects to seeing those seven other plays and watching great productions, and on top of that, we going on, like, a whole day trip the Tuesday before, and spending the whole Saturday there, it really made us connect as a drama club. You know, you spend, like, several, several, several hours with these people, you know? There's no way that you can't, you know, fall in love with all of them, and really grow as a family. I think having that outside, outside trip really connected us as a club, and really kind of solidified our relationship together. So I think that was a great addition to this year's drama club.
Questions?
I guess I would like to ask Katie and Mikel, what's the most valuable thing you learned at the Theater Festival that you attended?
I have to say, I feel like I learned a lot about the theater community, and also a lot about, well, acting, of course, but I've already mentioned that. And the great thing about the, not, not competition, but festival, is that while there is a certain amount of competition there, it's mostly about us, just all of the schools getting together, and seeing how other schools do things, how, what other schools are doing with their drama programs. And I feel like that's the best thing I took out of it, is that, though we, though we are kind of against each other, and we do, we do sort of compete to be the best, it's also mostly about learning from each other and gaining experience from each other, sort of growing off of each other.
Very supportive.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I think while there was, like, the aspect, I agree with Katie, of the competition and trying to, you know, stand up on top of everyone and, like, be the best, I think it honestly, it was the first time in my life where I'd been surrounded by probably 100 and something kids with the same passion of drama. You know, our drama club has never been, like, several members, like, we've always been a small community inside the school, which we're trying to grow now, but being surrounded by all these kids, and all these parents, and all the teachers who supported those kids and directed the plays, who had such a passion for drama, you know, like, I know in our show, like, people laughed throughout, you know, you stood up for people, you clapped, you encouraged them, and even when the other schools moved on, like, you weren't like, oh, we, like, oh, we lost, whatever, it's more like, I'm so happy to see that your production has moved on. And on top of that, like, I remember the director of Attleboro, he, which was, hosted this festival, he kind of focused on saying that it doesn't matter whether you win or you move on. It's not about those last hour, it's not about that last hour where they announce the winners, it's about the 12 hours we spent together as a collective community, growing and forming new friendships, and meeting new people who have the same passion and love for drama as you do. So I think that's what I took away from that experience.
Excellent.
I have a question for our advisors. Could you comment a little bit on your role versus Mr. Craig's role, and maybe the contributions he's making as a new member to our team?
Sure. I see myself as kind of behind the scenes, anything that needs to be done has, can be done. With Jared being more of a director with the stage itself, not knowing people in the school community, I'm not connected to him. So if he needs, you know, when can we open something? Can we, can we have this done? Who runs the lights? Who runs the sound? So I was that facilitator for him, too. But on top of that, I'm looking at the advertising, I'm looking at the budgets, I'm looking at, you know, how can we get more people in here? So that's my role right now. We're trying to figure that out as we go forward, but he's definitely saying, okay, you want to direct, it's all yours. But when he's not here, and sometimes he's not, he's got other commitments sometimes, that's when we jump in, too. So we kind of started this play, and then Jared came in and helped, you know, relieve pitcher for, if you will, to kind of get things going at the end of it, you know? So we help each other out, and I want to speak for Ms. Matronik, but she does a great job with technical elements of our staging as well, but...
I think we've split it up into three distinct roles, though we all help each other out and fill in where needed. So Jim is kind of our production man, dealing with, like you said, paperwork, scheduling, outreach to the community, fees, fees, and more fees. And then Jared handles primarily working with the actors on their craft, and I've been working primarily with the technical crew on, okay, this is how we use a hammer, and this is how we use a saw, and what do you want the set to look like? Because if you don't know what you want it to look like, there's no point in picking up the hammer to start with. And do we want to have this huge idea for this enormous set, or should we pick and choose one of the three things that are the most important, and then do a good job crafting those items and trying to steer them, let them make their own choices, but help them with, this is how to use the sewing machine, this is how to paint. Some of them don't know that, it's kind of surprising. And getting supplies and this kind of thing, to help the technical aspects of things as well, and then filling in.
I actually, I actually like the sound of that division of labor with Jared, with Jared, who has experience acting, coming in and working with the students.
Yep.
And Jim, you, you know, managing a lot of the production and oversight, which is so important.
Yep.
And then, as you say, the technical aspects and teaching. You, you guys may not know this, I don't know if the superintendent's had a chance to talk to you about it, but drama, and the arts in general, but the drama program specifically is something that we've been talking about for a number of years. We have a very rich program, K through 8.
Yes.
That's a great feeder system, and we're not capturing enough of that yet.
That's right.
In my opinion, so, you know, we've got parent volunteers who we talked about, who are doing great things at the elementary schools. We've got the middle school, which does both, you know, you know, what Tom does down there.
Yes, right.
Yeah, that's what Katie was in last year, the festival.
The festival, yeah.
Actually, the thing that, May 3rd, they're, I'm going to jump in, just say, May 3rd, the middle school drama is competing, and they're doing their production for the community on May 1st, which is a Friday night, so.
Okay, great.
Orphan Train is theirs.
This weekend, this weekend, they're putting on their musical, their spring musical. Forty-five students, about 10 parents working in the background, building sets, running the sound.
Right.
The show this weekend is Shrek Jr.
Right.
And I'd encourage you to go visit and talk to Mrs. Cantfield, I was just there watching. I've got a son who's, actually both sons, my high school son's running Spotlight, my younger son's in the show. But when you talk about outreach, advertising, raising money, they do a really nice job.
Yep.
So I think the role you guys are playing up here is really, really important, to maintain that continuity and get that pipeline of kids, so. Mikel, you might go chat with some of them, too, and tell them about some of the neat opportunities you get when you come to the high school.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think that's, the middle school is where I started. Now, I didn't start acting until I was in eighth grade with Mr. Gill. And if it wasn't for joining that club and having him, I wouldn't be here where I am now with drama club. So I think starting some middle school and encouraging them to join the club and to continue their passion for drama, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that the, as you know, the drama club is separate from the production, but that's why Katie has had her experience in the, in the middle and high school festivals. But I think, I'm so thrilled with what you've all done. Your leadership, Mikel, has been obviously instrumental, and our two new advisors, plus Mr. Craig. I think it's, the high school program is, we're calling this the first rebuilding year, I guess.
That's it, yes.
But I, that's what I'm calling it. But it's exactly what I hoped for, which we've discussed, and we have discussed, which is, to, the high school students obviously take more ownership of learning the craft. And this has really been about learning the craft, both about acting and play production and everything that goes into it. And that's what a high school program should be, and I'm thrilled to see that so many decisions were in the students' hands, because that's where it belongs, at the secondary, at the high school level.
Yep.
And I couldn't be happier, and I look forward to the second rebuilding year. But I thought the two programs are outstanding, the two plays, and I can't wait for the murder mystery.
What was the date of that again?
May 29th.
May 29th.
It's a Friday.
Everybody mark your calendars.
From 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
Not changing anymore.
But, yeah, more on that coming forward, but...
I love some of the new programs you talked about, it sounds exciting.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Glad to talk about it.
Give you all the support you can, you can handle.
Appreciate that.
Really appreciative of what you're doing, and for anyone who's looking for something to do Friday night, or twice on Saturday, Saturday matinee, Saturday night, go check out the middle school's production, and we'll keep those kids coming on up. In fact, some of the high school kids are down there helping direct and choreograph.
That's right, that's right. One of our current actors, Sarah Cousin, has been, is working with the kids down there, too, so.
Yeah, so it's great, it's a nice, it's a nice program. The more we can build on that, the better.
Yep.
And Bruce, Abby Speer, who, you know, was one of the winners in the festival, she helped with the Annie production at the Taylor School. And of course, she toured with Annie when she was in fourth grade, I think. But it is great to see the older students helping the younger students, and it will, I think, help grow your program ultimately down the road, so it's wonderful.
Well, thank you for coming out tonight and sharing your success.
We may have another future leader right over there.
All right, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
I think so. Thank you.
Break a leg. Thank you. Leave the chairs.
Well, thank you for what you're doing to fortify that, I think that's exciting.
Great.
A few familiar faces coming to the table, I see.
So, as, as the school committee knows, we're always looking for...
I just wanted to say, you're very well spoken.
Oh, isn't she?
Thank you. You're very well spoken, I congratulate you on that, it's not easy. But we all said it amongst ourselves, so I thought I'd say it all night. And with that, I won't say another word.
So, as, as the committee knows, we're always looking for new community partners to come and talk to us about how we can work together for the benefit of our students, and in this case, it's a new slash alumni-known, I'm not going to say old, partnership, which I would say has some wonderfully renewed energy. And so, this was an easy outreach to me, because I just had to receive an email. And, and I'd like to introduce the officers of the Foxborough Alumni Association, Christine Freeman, president, Deb Giardino, vice president, Lauren Batar, clerk, Heather Harding, treasurer. And they sent me, Lewis Heather sent me a lovely email, saying that the Alumni Association had recreated themselves to become more active, and were looking for ways they could partner with the schools. From there, we discussed at administrative team meeting, this wonderful offer, and we brainstormed ideas, a range of ideas, things that could happen in school, things that are small, things that are large, things that could happen elsewhere in the community that we could work together on. And they then met and took over five of the ideas that they liked, that they want to take on as projects, or at least five, actually, several, that they wanted to take on, and they are, they certainly have a variety, I'm going to turn it over to them, because they have this wonderful flyer that you see in your packet, and for those of you at home, I don't think you will be able to see it, but I'm going to turn it over to you, and so you can tell the community what you're up to, famous alumni.
Well, I think it needs to start with, and then I'll just jump in, because you're just going to go to Heather, with, it was Jack and your dad, and I go, and...
Joanna Hearn.
Joanna Hearn, and...
It was Vinnie, Jack, Charlie McAllister.
Charlie McAllister.
But when Jack calls you up, and in this case, calls Heather up and says, would you, you don't say no.
You can't say no.
You can't say no, which is how...
I agree.
...it happened. And then Heather calls her dearest and closest and hardest-working friends, and that's how we landed up here. But I just wanted to explain how we landed up here, and then the rest, Heather can explain to you.
Well, thanks, Deb, and thanks to the committee members for letting us come here
Well, thanks Deb, and thanks to the committee members for letting us come here tonight. Really, we just kinda wanted to come and let you know what we are and what we're trying to do and really just spread the word. The original Alumni Association was founded by those gentlemen in two thousand and two, and they worked hard at fundraising and trying to reach out to people, then in two thousand thirteen, Jack started to say, "We, we kinda come on board and, and work with us," and then it led to what we have here, and primarily, what we had been focusing on was just getting the word out, technology that they didn't have back then, you know, Twitter and Facebook and all that stuff, so, and then we kinda thought, all right, now we have a little bit of money, we have a little bit of a base of people, so where do we go from here, and that's when we reached out to you. So, our mission, and not ours, but the mission of the association is pretty much to support the Foxborough school system in maintaining its high level of academic excellence, the present effort of the association are directed towards enriching the academic experience of present and future students at all grade levels. Pretty much, we're willing to help wherever it's needed using Foxborough High alum, so we're, we're a little different than a group like Faces, which is more, you know, grant-oriented, teachers come, they look for stuff, we, although we will fund all the projects that we take on, there's no cost to the school, but we're looking more to be labor-intensive, so we're trying to get a base of Foxborough High alum that will say, "Look, I could do this, I could do this, I could do this," so, you know, we got over four hundred alum signed on and said, "Yeah, we'll help," we're up to like four hundred and three.
Wow.
Right.
And then we kinda thought, well, okay, what do they need help with? So that's what kinda led us to Deb, and, and some of the things that we came up with in the general terms were like mentoring programs, speaker training, practice interview sessions, after-school clubs, sponsorship experiences, you know, we do have some alum that live across the country and said, "I can't help, but if you have a student that needs help getting to a cheerleading competition or something like that, I could sponsor someone," so.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, so we're trying to put together a whole database so that any teacher or any school that thinks of something they need, we'll do our best to try to fill it by reaching out to our alumni base. Some of the things we're actually working on right now, after our meeting with Deb, we're forming a chess club, establishing a homework help center at the library, maybe one day a week or however much we can, providing some additional coverage at this media center so they can stay open later during the day, and pretty much just developing a database of our alumni and what skills or talents or, you know, whatever they can share, kind of if you enjoyed your time at Foxborough High or Foxborough Schools, now's the time to pay it back. One of the most recent things that we also started doing was I was actually working with Michelle Gardner on a seventh grade math program where we agreed to kind of be parent partners from, for some of the parents that don't really understand all the technology the kids use nowadays between.
Did I join that part?
Yeah. Between Edmodo and Connected and Assistment, some of the parents, they, they can't really help the kids at home because they just don't get it, so, you know, we said, "All right, we'll go and we'll really learn how to do this, and then we'll reach out to those parents and go to their house, either when their kids are there or when their kids aren't there, and show them these, is everything available, this is how you do it," that kinda thing, so really, we'll, we'll do whatever.
I might be a little biased, but I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. Thank you.
Super.
So, pretty much whatever we can think of, you know, the chess club obviously would involve buying the chess sets and stuff, which our organization would do, but we're primarily trying to be labor-driven, you know, using alum to provide support for current Foxborough High School students, so we really just wanted to come here tonight for shameless plug, just because we really wanna get the word out and get as, as many people to like us on Facebook and sign up and, you know, agree to help, so.
Awesome.
And we have a tented Founder's Day, which always has all of the old yearbooks that are carried out every year by.
The historical.
By the historical committee, and alums stop by there, there are gonna be more and better opportunities for people to stop by and sign up, you know, we hope to whip that into some sort of shape that will entice them to come in and, and stop and not only sign up, but maybe list something that they may like to contribute, so we'll, we'll be hitting them up on Founder's Day as well as going through the, the other types of methods that Heather's already mentioned.
Yeah, that's pretty much it, we just wanted to kinda come and tell you what we were and what we're trying to do.
Anyone?
I, I just think it's great, I, I think it's great when people wanna roll up their sleeves and get involved, and I, the speaker series is something we've been talking about, and it's just great, it'd be great to have people who graduated from Foxborough Public Schools come back and talk about what they're doing, and if you're keeping a database, then there's something, if we need somebody who's an aeronautical engineer to come and talk, or could even Skype with a classroom at this point, if they live in California, that's great, I mean, I know we have people who produce movies and, and all kinds of alumni with various talents, and I think this is wonderful, and it's something we've been asking for parent volunteers, but this is a great resource, I think, for the community and an excellent way to give back, and the other, the other ideas you have here are all so great, I was actually picking up my son at two-thirty and I saw them shutting the lights off in the media center, and I was thinking about this, I'm like, "See, if we just had a couple people who could stay until four."
Right.
You know, that would be an ability for.
Even to the late bus.
Yeah.
That's what we're thinking, just.
Yeah, what's the late bus?
An hour.
Yeah.
Three-thirty.
Three-thirty.
Two-thirty, three-thirty.
So, most of the ideas, I mean, much as we'd like to take credit for all them, it really came out of us meeting with Deb and saying, "Okay, can, can you go back and ask what would be most beneficial?" We don't wanna offer stuff that nobody needs or nobody wants, we really wanna offer things that are needed, so, you know, that's kinda what we've been focusing on.
That's great. That was pretty exciting, 'cause I think the most difficult type of help to get is the physical labor.
Hours.
Devoting your time.
Right.
And that certainly is most challenging for us, so I, I couldn't be more excited and I really look forward to some of the things we can do together, so, we're gonna start tonight by getting the word out about all of the efforts, what they're doing, and I'm gonna start working on the library contact tomorrow, and then we'll, we'll keep it going. I think they have such great energy, and if we could just ride that tail for a little bit, that would be great.
Happy to help.
Super, and, and if anyone wants to, to reach out to us, contact us, you can do that, send us a message on Facebook or a direct message on Twitter, and Heather's emails on there too, so you can just send her an email.
And there is a link to their Alumni Association on our main website, in case people are wondering.
Right.
So we have a link there.
Yes, we asked for that, we thank you for.
Yeah, so that's one of the first things we did, and we actually took down an old type of alumni collection that hadn't been really being used since, I don't know, eleven or twelve years ago, so.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, I went to check it out, when I realized my own child was still in college.
Yeah.
The last time it seemed to be active.
Used.
We don't need that, but they, they have a much more.
That was a big step, we needed that step.
Yeah, they have a much more viable network on, on Facebook, so we just replaced it with a link to theirs.
So that was a huge step, and we appreciate that, so that will start, yeah.
I have to say, I'm just so impressed, and I'm not a Foxborough Schools graduate, as you guys know, but I'm, I'm so impressed that you would do this, and really that the four of you are doing this, 'cause it's not like you have nothing else on your plate.
Talking about four of the busiest people that I already know.
But when you talk about.
This is their new project.
But it kinda blends with everything else we do.
Yeah, it does, it fits in nice with everything else.
Just another link.
When you talk about some of the names involved, like Mitchell Moore and Othellette and Igo.
Yeah.
And now, Igo Freeman, and Harding, and Giordano, and, I mean, you guys are just, what you're doing is really great, and what I was sitting here thinking as you're going through is, how do we make this stick? You know, how do we really make sure this gets taken advantage of?
They make our kids do it, right.
Well, but I mean, how do we make sure we take advantage of your services, and one of the thoughts, and, and you know how to do it better than I, but for example, connecting them with guidance and some of the guidance work that goes on at the different grade levels, is that something that potentially could?
Well, I think, I'm gonna be cautious, 'cause we are a public meeting, we brainstorm what we thought was the ten best ideas that we had, and they certainly picked up on that. I would be very cautious about that idea because of confidentiality.
Yeah.
So, that wasn't on our list, but so, you know, so many things, I think that they're, I think that the, the projects they are gonna take on will, will be a great start, and who knows what, what we'll think about for next year, but.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just brainstorming, right, but.
Right, I just wanna be careful, 'cause I don't wanna say anything that, you know, I just wanna be careful.
Oh, yeah, you hear free labor and labor-intensive people, people that are willing to take on labor-intensive.
Well, I'm just thinking about, I'm thinking about some of our college prep programs, or some of our internship things, or things of that nature.
Oh, good, okay.
As opposed to individual students.
It's like what Ellen Pillsbury does in the.
Yeah, right.
Well, school to career, right.
School to career, yes, in the interviewing process.
I would say, other than these people, Ellen probably has the best network I know.
That's what I had in mind, was helping with some of those programs.
Sure.
Another thought that occurred to me was, you know, we have these career days, you know, and I manage the one, as you guys, probably many of you know, at the middle school, which heretofore has been me reaching out to any contacts I have who would be willing to give of a half-day of their time, but if you thought that might be something that the Alumni Association or members of the Alumni Association would participate in, that's coming up in June, I would love for you to poll your alumni and see who would be willing to give a half-day to talk about what they do, and of course, the high school has a career day as well.
Right.
But that'd be another way.
That's, that's easy for us to do, I mean, our, our Facebook page reaches over four hundred people, Lauren administers that, and she can put requests for, I mean, I don't know how much we'd, response we'd get, but it can't hurt to put something on there.
Right.
I think it's June fifth is the middle school's career day.
Okay.
And if anyone's interested in sharing of their experiences, just have them contact me, please.
The high school career day, Ellen, as our school to career specialist, Ellen coordinates that.
All right.
But those are just a couple ideas I had of how we can help make your offer really get traction.
Sure.
Joe, you got a comment?
The career day for the high school will be in November.
Thank you.
That's correct.
We do it every other year.
That's correct.
Thanks, Joe.
But again, thank you very much for your offer to help.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Pretty caring community.
Yes, they do everything they do with a lot of heart, that's why we know they're not gonna drop the ball, because they're doing it with their hearts.
Okay, update on elementary report cards.
Yes, I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Burdos and have Allison Mello and Diane Casilli, Arcata Eight curriculum directors, join her, they've been talking and thinking with, along with our other administrators and our faculty, about the elementary report cards for a long time, very thoroughly and carefully, and so they're here to give you an update on where we are with the elementary report cards, and a little bit of heads up as to what's coming.
Okay, so, with the standards-based report card, there is a lot to it at the elementary level, and we came back in two thousand and twelve because of the new frameworks that came out in two thousand and eleven in math and English language arts, there were a number of changes, significantly in math, and at that time, we felt as though we could not wait to move forward, so we came at that point and really increased the number of standards from four or five in math to fifteen in that area, just much more thorough reporting, and so for, for those at, at home too, just to remember that the purpose of a report card is really to communicate progress of a child in the skills that we expect them to learn at a particular grade level in all content areas, so with the standards being much more robust, if you will, we wanna make sure that we're doing a good job of reporting that information. We felt as though we could wait with the other areas, and plus, there was some uncertainty in the areas of science, and then even with social studies, even though the, the curriculum is, is still a little bit dated, if you will, but there's been some new developments that have come up, especially through our curriculum work with our sci, social studies review. So, to date, we have a report card committee that's led by the three of us, and it involves teachers from every grade level through fourth grade, from different schools, so if we have a first-grade teacher that's representing in, at the Igo, we wanted to make sure that the other first-grade teacher was at Burl or at Taylor, so that way that we have representation from all three schools in equal, we have reading specialists, special education, and then Pete Regan is our principal representative on the committee as well. So we've been looking at the areas of science and social studies to begin with, really looking at what are the most important skills for students to learn at a particular grade level and what are our expectations, and I will turn that part over to Allison in just a minute, but we wanted to make sure that we started with an area that was not as robust as, say, English language arts, because there's so much more within the new framework that's there, with the implementation of the Common Core state standards that are embedded within the Massachusetts curriculum framework. So, we started working on really teasing out those standards and looking at what are the, the power standards, if you will, and are going to be continuing with that work, but we're also looking at the marking symbols, so for instance, looking at what is the expectation of meeting expectation or progressing toward the particular standard, and then looking at the reporting period, currently, we have four quarters that we report on at the elementary level and looking at trimesters, and the reason for moving to trimesters, there, there's a lot of reasons, and we're gonna speak to that a little bit too, and the biggest piece of that is the number of standards that we're reporting on, on the report card, making sure that we have the opportunity for students to really demonstrate proficiency, and all of the assessments, you hear a lot about the assessments that we do, whether it's our baseline and benchmarks, whether it's state assessments, all of our informal assessments that we do, by providing more opportunity for a longer period of time, you're able to get a better picture of students to where you could correct from a parent's standpoint, as well as from a teacher's standpoint, keeping our conferences and the progress reports that we already do at the same time, but extending from a forty-five day essentially period of time to a sixty-day period of time, it's providing a little bit more opportunity to really kind of correct anything that we see early on by having conversations with parents and have an opportunity for a student to demonstrate their proficiency by giving a little bit longer of a window. We will be having parent information nights once we have this in June, and we'll be coming back forward with the report card at that time, but we wanted to really kind of set the stage at this point of where we are with the standards, so the, the science and social studies piece that we've been talking about, the science curriculum review's taking place right now, so if you wanna speak to that a minute?
Sure, you'll be seeing me in a few weeks, once we finish our science review, so that we can tell you all about it, one of the big catalysts for our science review has been the drafting of the revised standards, so you may have heard of the next-generation science standards, those were proposed nationally, and then Massachusetts took those and used them as a guide to draft their own version of those standards, so that we, you know, we like to tweak things and make them our own in Massachusetts and personalize them, they're not formally adopted yet, but we expect them to be formally adopted, they actually moved up the date, so it should be next month, they're open for public review, yes, it was supposed to be in the fall, I spent a lot of time on the phone with the department trying to nail them down because there's implications for us in the district. So I was excited about the opportunity, and the teachers were excited about the opportunity to revise the science piece of the report card, because it under-represents the changes that we've talked to you about in the last few years, we have changed our approach to science in the elementary schools, it's very hands-on, it's very inquiry-based, and now we're really upping the engineering and design, because that's one of the big pieces in the new standards, so that'll come out of the review as well, so when we looked at that, we wanted to get away from reporting on the report card to say very general things, and the work of the committee, there was a lot of discussion and looking at how other districts report, and thinking about, we wanted to report on, well, we study rocks and minerals during this quarter, and we study vertebrates in this quarter, and we realized that certainly wasn't a good way to go with standards changing, we wanna talk about the big skills and the big ideas of science, and so, how do you use your observation skills, how do you collect data, how do you report on things and analyze, how do you formulate an experiment, and we want those skills to grow coherently over time, so that's sort of the work that the committee has been doing, and I'm really impressed with the draft that the teachers, and it really has come from the teachers, that they have come up with so far, and I think they are most excited because they have wanted changes to the report card, they have wanted a trimester, they want a longer time to collect data, and they certainly wanna give parents the best idea that they can about how their students are doing in school, and when you have more exact language and more precise language on the report card, that helps.
And for social studies, it gave us an opportunity, through the review last year, we had really looked at identifying what are the core standards, what's most important for students to know, and know well of moving on to the next grade level, as well as the content literacy skills, argument writing, how does that all work into social studies, so this is, gives us an opportunity to look at what standards do we think are most important based on what we came out of the review with, to be able to report out to parents and to include those higher-level thinking skills in the argument piece to report that information out to parents, so teachers are very happy about the revisions that are being made, or the drafts that we're, we're working on now.
I think with the, the standards alone, the conversations that are taking place of really what is most important and what is something that can be sustained over time, and not just the rocks and minerals, really looking at those big ideas and college and career readiness and making sure that whatever path, that there is that coherency as we go through the grades, and then looking at things even as simple as, for instance, right now we report on something on the, just attendance, we look at attendance and we look at tardies, but teachers have talked about when children are dismissed from school, that is just as important because they're missing, they can be dismissed earlier in the day, we need to look at that, we've become very accustomed to looking at all kinds of data, and those are the kinds of conversations that are coming up, if a child's being dismissed multiple times, they're missing that instruction, so that's another piece that we want to have on there to be able to provide that information to parents, so it really is looking at a much more thorough picture to provide that information, so we have that partnership more, so we can make sure that wherever we see areas, we can have more time to address that, really create a much better picture, and it also with trimesters too, it allows children and teachers to have more time to be acclimated within the classroom, and to spend more time on direct instruction versus having all of these reporting periods where you're still going to have all of the communication that's there, but have a little bit more spend more time on direct instruction versus having all of these reporting periods where you're still going to have all of the communication that's there, but have a little bit more time to correct any pieces that you feel as though in November, when you're meeting at conferences, we still have a couple of more weeks before the reporting period ends. So if there's something that we need to really work to make sure a child is where they need to be, and we know that they can be there, we just need that additional support and that partnership, we can get there.
One of the really cool things that's come out of the work the teachers have done, and we know this, but it really has brought it into focus, that the content literacy standards and the argument writing, that ties into social studies, ELA, math, we have to, you know, make an argument in math, and science. So it's really helped us see that our data can be very flexible when we're collecting on kids. We can look at them through that lens in different content areas and report on it. That's been great for them to see.
Sounds like very thoughtful work. Comments from the committee or the superintendent?
Just, I think, to, that parents, if you're watching, should expect that the committee's going to recommend that move to trimesters. And it does, it might sound a little unusual, and just, you know, let it sink in, wait for the parent night. It has become more the norm and quite common in other districts that, for at least ten years now, to, for elementary students to move toward a trimester approach. So it might feel new to you, but it is actually not that new in the industry, and we feel this is the right time for us to move. We don't always, you know, be the first ones out there, but it really is time for that. And so we do expect that to come out with the report card. You will see that format. And they will certainly do as thorough a job educating the parents about the whys and the reasoning behind that.
So this would be from kindergarten through fourth?
Fourth grade, yes.
I can't think of a reason why-
First grade, not kindergarten, first grade.
First through fourth.
Can't think of a reason why a trimester schedule would have any substantive impact negatively on how we measure progress at the elementary level.
It gives us more time to measure the progress accurately. But it just, we know, I mean, anything that feels sometimes like a change from what we experienced might feel new, but that's why we're here tonight. Actually, one of the reasons, so that people can start thinking about it and get used to it and not feel it's really that big. It's only a matter of a few weeks, let's face it.
Yeah, sure.
So this gives the students plenty of time, as Amy pointed out, plenty of time to actually acquire the concepts and apply them and apply the skills, and then also have the teacher do good classroom assessment to be able to report accurately. So when you're chopping short windows, it doesn't happen to quite the thorough extent that we're going for.
Well, I mean, I think it sounds like a great idea, trimesters. And I mean, I know you just said it's only a few weeks, but that's, it can be huge-
It is.
-when you're talking about, you know, six and seven and eight-year-old kids.
Absolutely.
A few weeks can make a huge difference. Things click, and they can progress and just get a concept that they might not have, you know, in November. By the end of December, they've nailed it. And I think it sounds like a great idea. When you bring the actual revised report card back, will you bring one of the old ones and one of the new ones, so that we can compare and contrast-
Yes, absolutely.
And see what you've done?
And that's even within the committee, after we worked in different groups and came back and looked at it, just to see how much more information is there and how much more thorough.
I think that part's important, though.
It really does. It's the before and after, you're right. It really makes a statement. But I think, to your point, where there's such a difference in the couple of weeks at that age, as a parent, thinking about my own children, if I can have the heads-up from the teacher at parent-teacher conferences to know that they're on the cusp, I would much rather have a couple more weeks to really work with my child-
Yeah.
-to shore up those skills, so that way they're able to truly demonstrate what they're capable of, versus having a report card at a period of time when I really didn't have the opportunity to intervene myself.
Well, I think the other thing you said, Amy, about how much reporting we have to do these days, I mean, if we can take out one mark's worth of that time away from instruction to do reporting, I think is valuable.
I personally do have experience with the trimesters, the district I was in, as does Amy, and I probably, the district we were in just before this, and for me, the one in between, my Foxwell tenure, and it worked out great. It really was a tremendous advantage for students and parents alike, understanding where their child is a little bit more, and the teachers certainly thought it was a better system. So we both have experience with the trimesters, and I think they're absolutely right in the direction they're going to be recommending, and look forward to seeing the new report cards. Because when they say that we were reporting too generally, that, I think, you know, we are in some cases. So it might say demonstrates, you know, acquisition of science content or concepts, and then applies the skills of-
What does that mean?
And then applies the skills of a scientist, but it's too broad. So it needs to be a little bit more, now that we have, you know, engineering design, other aspects of science, wouldn't you like to know, as you would in the other areas, well, exactly what is my childhood in science, and what are the other areas that the child needs to work on? So it doesn't really say much. It's just general, general science and general social studies, I think, they both suffer from the same problem, which is not enough specificity in the current report cards, so.
It's obviously too young, K through four, to start thinking about careers and where kids will have strong aptitudes. But I think, just in that theme, I think anytime we can provide more information about where our students do well, and where they struggle a little bit more or need a little more help, I think that just helps us, as parents, advise and guide and channel. So, I think it sounds great. Any other comments from the committee? Joe, I know you've been patient, Joe. What comment did you have?
Will this be happening in middle high, middle and high school trimesters?
No.
No, just, we're just talking about elementary, one through four.
Are you guys gonna ever do it, like, trying to?
No.
Can I know, at Attabro's High School, they do it?
Yes, but we're not. They have a different sort of year-long schedule, I think, a little bit differently as well. But no, this is just for elementary.
Is it because they do the half-professional zone days?
I'm not an expert in how the other districts do it, Joe.
But I have a related question to Joe's, that I was thinking, do we have a similar requirement at the middle and high school to get more specific on competencies and mastery of competencies, or not necessarily?
I think one of the differences at middle and high is where you can go online and look, you know, regularly at grades and those kinds of things. You can see more specific along the way, whether it's homework, whether it's just regular, you know, assignments or tests and quizzes.
Not standards, though, right?
Not standards, it's a little bit more content.
Not on the report card, right.
But I'll just interject on Power School, though. With certain assignments, ORQs and DBQs, you can click on, and the teacher will explain in great detail how the grade was derived and focusing on the standards. I know in English, social studies, I've seen this-
Yes.
-with the writing standards.
Yes, Diane and her team have done a lot of work with document-based questions.
So there is feedback. It's not on the report card, but it is in Power School.
Well, yeah, so the point is, to their point, you can get more information online at those levels.
So I'd say the answer, fear answer is not right now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I wonder if we'll get to that point.
I think one of the compliments, though, about people on our team is that they sort of anticipate when work needs to be done, and so who knows?
Yeah, okay.
What they'll anticipate.
And although we're not going to be recommending a change in the kindergarten reporting, they report twice a year, we are revising the standards and making those more, you know, thorough. But the reporting period for kindergarten is twice.
Good. Very good. Anything else? Great update. Thank you.
Great work.
Thank you.
I think I'll stay here for the next part.
Can't wait for the draft.
That's right. I feel like we haven't seen Diane and Amy, I mean, Allison and Diane in so long, and-
I'll be back in a couple of weeks.
Okay, a couple of weeks, sorry. So Dr. Berto Schur there for Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Coordinated Program Review Report, is that correct?
That is correct.
Joined by a partner in crime, I see.
Yes, the CPR queens, I guess, Coordinated Program Review. So just as an introduction, you know, the review was completed, and we've been awaiting our final report. I think we mentioned it at a recent meeting. The final report has come in, as you know. A copy's provided to the chair of the school committee, to the superintendent, and to, obviously, to the two point people. And instead of making you read the entire report and deciding what to make of it, as we did five years ago, when we, or six years ago, six years ago, when-
I'll be happy to share it, though.
You know, it's, it's, just say no. But you're welcome to-
I struggle with the synopsis.
You are, you are welcome to ask. No, seriously, you are welcome to ask. Just call Gina and say you want a copy of the full report, and we'd be happy to provide it. So six years ago, when I was the assistant and Dr. Modus was here, what we found helpful was to provide you with a summary of all the different criteria that were reviewed by the Department of Education, and then provide you with a summary of the areas that they pointed out that they would like us to focus on and addressing. So we thought we would take that same tactic this time, and so I'll turn it over to Amy and to Sandra, welcome Sandra, to talk to you about the results of the coordinated program review. And as always, we find it helpful to be reflective and have outside people look at what we do, and then give consideration to those recommendations. So, Amy?
Okay. So just for those at home that might not understand what a coordinated program review, it's really the accountability system of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And it looks at what we should be doing as a school system, going back to the ed reform of 1993, and really looking at promoting student achievement and high standards for all students. So as part of that process, back in the spring, we went through a self-assessment, where we had to look at all of the criteria for special education, civil rights, English language learners, and Title I was a separate piece. But we looked at that and really reflected, as Debbie said, what is it that, where we're really doing well, and we had to make sure that we were meeting all of the criteria that was there. We provided a great amount of documentation. And then in early November, we met with them to get an idea of when they became, when they came on site, the number of interviews and the schedule, and what that would look like. So the week of November 17th, they visited for the entire week, and during that time, again, looking at overall compliance of all of the education requirements, they needed to make sure that they triangulated their data, so that they were looking at quantitative data, the data that comes automatically to the Department of Ed, and then also the qualitative piece through interviews, through observations. And at that time, they interviewed ten administrators, thirty-nine teaching and support staff folks across the district, parents from representing English language learners, our special ed pack, and then anyone from the general public had the opportunity as well to contact the Department of Ed and provide any information or ask any questions that they would like to. They conducted a record review of thirty-five special education folders that were randomly selected, and out of our twenty ELL students, they selected ten randomly of our ELL records to look at those. They sent out parent surveys, over fifty of them to special education parents, and ten to English language learner parents. And then they observed through the spaces in all of our buildings, eighteen instructional spaces during their visits. At the end of that week, and all of those interviews and observations, they had an X and interview with myself, Sandra, and Debbie to kind of give us an idea of what their thoughts were, based on all of the week's activities. And at that time, they shared some of the comments from staff with us. And I thought it was really important to kind of share some of those comments, you know, from staff. They said, "They make us work really hard, but we also know that we're number one." That came directly from the staff. And I think that really speaks volumes, to where the expectations are high, but they feel very valued at the same time. They said that we had very focused principals. I don't think that that's any surprise to us, based on our principals and our assistant principals in our schools. They said that all that they interviewed were all very positive and very supportive. So really, the culture and climate within the schools, it really spoke to them in what they heard and what they were able to observe. They said that all schools really, really value children, and that's what we're here for. It really is. We're here for the children. And then that is a direct quote from them. They said that we had a very inclusive environment. I think that that's what we are, and that people are willing to change, and they have open minds with programs. We've talked about programs, especially in special ed, and making sure that we're really meeting the needs of our students, and that it's not a matter of, this is the way we've always done it. It's really looking at, what does our data say? What is all of the information in being willing to learn and to grow? And that we use data to drive our services. And I thought, again, that really spoke to a lot of the things that we talked to here at this table. So our final report that we received, this very long, lengthy report, out of all of the different criteria that they looked at, they would give us a rating as commendable, partially implemented, not implemented, or implementation in progress. And we want, really, the goal is to see that we have everything that's implemented. And if you end up having a commendable in there, they're very stingy with those, to be quite honest. But to even have one is something to really be proud of. And so I'm going to speak to one of those in just a moment. So in the area of special ed, we had fifty-nine criteria that we had to meet. Those looked at assessment of students. Let me just say that in civil rights, the same criteria groupings were looked at as in special ed. So assessment of students, student identification and program placement, parent community involvement, curriculum and instruction, student support services, faculty, staff, and administration, school facilities, program plan and evaluation. And so for civil rights, it was all of those, and then one additional one, which was record-keeping and fund use. So as we had to meet all of those different criteria, they then came back and said whether we had implemented those or we had partially implemented those. In the area of civil rights, everything was implemented. We didn't have one criteria that was partial or not implemented. Everything was implemented. And then we had a commendable in one particular area. And I would just like to read their words on this one, because I think that it's really important for people to hear this one. So this particular criteria was under the responsibilities of the principal, so this was all of our principals in our buildings. And it was rated as commendable. "A review of the documents and staff interviews indicated that principals are exceptionally dedicated to promoting general educational instructional supports from our district curriculum accommodation plan." The district curriculum accommodation plan is when, what are our plans in place for students that are not meeting the standards? What are we doing to provide supports to them in the general education curriculum? "This was made evident through our teacher-assistance teams, our TAT teams, through interventions, forms, and ways that we illustrate and detailed the TAT process, including parent communication checklist, along with specific student intervention plans. The forms that TAT members are asked to create are skill-based. They're based on SMART goals, which means they're specific, they're measurable, they're achievable, they're realistic, and they're timely. They are created based with current student performance levels, selection of evidence-based interventions, and intervention in a fidelity plan and an intervention log." And what that means is, we're very thorough. We're not going to let anyone slip through the cracks. If someone's struggling, we look at the data, we look at the things that are in place, and if we're not having success, we put the interventions in there, and we document that over time to see how their progress is being monitored over time. "Teachers reported that such a specific district curriculum accommodation process has helped reduce any possible instructional gaps, allowing a wider range of general education students to receive instruction and intervention within their general education program, along with feeling highly supported by their grade-level team and administrators through this thoughtful and rigorous process." So that's a lot of information and a lot of detail that's there, but it really speaks to what teachers and administrators are really doing to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students, and to do that in a general education curriculum, and then providing interventions when necessary. In the area of special education, I'll turn it over to Sandra, but I really think that one of the things that we see, again, is so positive, our inclusive environment. Anything that we had where there was only a small handful that are partially implemented, it speaks to consistency. It really, that's kind of the trend that goes through any of those. And then there was a new criteria that I think that was not any, it's not any surprise, that with it being new and all of the things that go along with it, the partial implementation. But you'll hear from Sandra, really, it's a matter of consistency. It's not that it's not in place.
Right, right. We had only five areas in that, they really want us to move to 100% consistency. And those areas are making sure that we have a history of the student's educational progress in general curriculum as part of the assessment process. Then the new requirements for students on the autism spectrum, making sure that we address specific areas that they have needs in, such as verbal and nonverbal communication needs, social interactions, needs resulting from a resistance to environmental changes, to just name a few. Also, we need to be consistent in providing two copies of the IEP and placement page to parents, and this is according to the regulations. The other area that we need to focus on consistency is writing out the nonparticipation justification statement. And that's a statement in the IEP that describes why we might be removing a student with special needs from the regular classroom, and making sure that we have that conversation at the team meeting. And finally, making sure that we really communicate in a very clear way with our parents using the N1 form, which is the Notice of Proposed School District Action, you know, giving a summary of what the meeting was about, what did we base our decisions on, what were the decisions that we came to at that meeting, and really, what were the next action steps. So it's only a few things, and I'm really looking forward to meeting with the DOE representative and talking about our action plan, which I hope will be next week.
Sandra, is that a written response that we're required to provide, or just a face-to-face meeting?
It's a written response, yeah.
And that happens within the next week or so, or?
I'm hoping, yes. I am in email communication with him now. We're going to try to meet before April vacation.
Yeah, great.
I thought, since there are close to ninety individual criteria for just these two areas, to have five, that we just need to be a little bit more consistent on was great. And these ninety, it's hard to count them exactly, because some say eighteen, eighteen A, they're actually two different ones. But because of the numbering system, if they're related, they put in As and Bs. But, so they're somewhere in the high eighties. I thought I counted eighty-nine, but I think Amy counted eighty-six, but you can count them on your own. But the, that does not include a report that we're still expecting about English learner education and Title I. Those are two other separate areas of review. The report comes in separately. So just in these two areas alone, special education and civil rights, there are close to ninety separate criteria that we have to provide written documentation, as well as them triangulate that information through their personal interviews and observations when they're on site. So there's a lot of work, to say the least.
It's a great summary. Comments?
I was just struck, as Deb said, that of the almost ninety criteria, these were the five areas that we need to take corrective action. And it doesn't seem like it's that, I don't want to say significant, but it's, seems like things that make sense, that we are capable of doing, that we can whip into shape, just like that.
Having a second copy of something.
That's what I mean.
Exactly.
So, thank you.
Debbie, anything?
It's amazing that there-
It's amazing that there were only five out of ninety. And that's, congratulations to the job you're already doing.
Thank you.
I just thought that it was wonderful to hear them put it into documentation, but to hear them say what we all know with our staff and our students that we have, that it really is a wonderful place to be. It's a very inclusive environment and people work really hard and are trying to do the absolute best for kids.
They did ask us several times that they shared that you're so inclusive. Is it really real? And I said, yes, this is the most, I think I shared with you last time I was here. It's the one of the--
Well, it's inclusive system you've worked for, right?
Yes, correct. And they saw it too.
Well, I think all of our students benefit from the inclusion, the inclusive environment.
So here's the part of the agenda where I always applaud and then say, what can we do better, right? So Amy, you started by saying this is Desi's way, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's way of ensuring that we're complying with requirements.
Yes.
And this particular view is specifically around special ed. And I can't believe, Sandra, as they went through this list, how many things, you must felt like they were really crawling into your space. But this was specifically special ed and civil rights, right?
Yes.
Do we, help me think through, do we do a similar analysis or is there a similar process for academic excellence, for rigor of program studies, or?
Not with that, because this is their system of compliance review. So it's about whether a district complies with laws and regulations and policies and procedures, which are quite extensive. And if you're doing all of these things right, I think you do have, for example, this program plan evaluation, there's pieces of that in all of their reviews, but it doesn't cover everything.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, does he have an exercise where they do a similar thing?
They do. If you're a district, it's really in trouble.
Yeah.
And then, and that's a different kind of review. But not, the typical, no, they don't have one because I don't even know if they could even--
Yeah, I was trying to think, I mean, is our accreditation the closest thing?
And I think about like, well, we have obviously knee ask at the high school.
Right.
You know, and that--
That's what I was thinking.
But that's not the Department of Ed.
Right. And that's a separate, and then even like with the Ready School Assessment Certification that we went through at the elementary level to become certified as ready schools. It's an outside, you know, group that certifies us, but it's not the Department of Ed.
Obviously, I'm not looking for ways for them to poke at us. But I, you know, I would love outside opinion on how we continue to improve, you know?
Well, they do have a process that's similar to that, but as you probably read in the paper, Holyoke is going into receivers here. So they do do that on their own and then select certain districts that they're going to put more of a microscope on. And I'd say probably, being so labor intensive as that process is, that's what they do. They can't possibly review three hundred and something--
No.
--school districts. And that's why this is only once every five or six years. But it's also often enough, it does seem, it comes back really fast, the coordinated program review, but--
And dare I say on camera that maybe we, if we were to receive such a service, maybe we would want to receive it from someone other than Desi anyway.
Well, I was going to say, it depends which, I'm going to say their answer would probably be that our assessment data serves that purpose. I think that's an argument that some people could make, whether, to the extent with any individual agrees with that, you know, it's certainly all over the place, I'm sure. But that is their assessment system for the strength. Because I think we're also forgetting that the reason that the state assessment system was created in the nineties was to, not to assess individual students at all. And it's become that, but it's not, the structure of the MCAS test wasn't that. It was just test the strength of a district's curriculum instruction. It truly is not designed as an individual student assessment. It's called a criterion reference test. How well does a district get kids to meet certain standards? So they would say that's their system, I'm going to say.
Well, this is a great job. Congratulations.
So we'll be back with the English language learner in Title I in the future.
Yes, we will.
We look forward to that. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Job well done.
Yes, a lot of work.
Okay, the BIKO quarterly update, Bi-County Collaborative.
Yes, as you know, it's now a regulation that you--
This feels like we were just there too.
You're right, it does.
It's the same thing when I was reading.
By regulation, each member school committee must receive an update on our, what's happening in our Bi-County Special Education Collaborative. So this is the quarterly update from March 2015. And as you can see, you collectively approved and signed a recent collaborative agreement because there's all kinds of new regulations around collaboratives in the last year. And that has now been, our BIKO amended collaborative agreement has been approved by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. We have a little increase in enrollment in the Bi-County programs. Our personal increase is only one this school year, so I think we might be up to five, four or five. Let's see, they have a new website. They are expanding and creating some new programs to meet the needs of the students in the multi-member districts. And they are focusing, as you can see, on networking for career placement for many of the students that do attend a collaborative program, as we are also here at the high school, which is another, you've heard recently, another new focus of the law, is to prepare students for transition to college and career. And they are doing things like having financial planning and legal planning, transition planning for families, long-term health for families of students with disabilities.
Sounds good.
So they are doing a lot of the same work we are, but definitely geared toward a specialized population that they serve. So I think the Bi-County Collaborative has certainly gotten better. And I would say there's a lot more collaboration in the collaborative. And I know Bill attends monthly--
That's good.
--business manager meetings from all the collaboratives. I'm on the board of directors, so we meet regularly with that. And it's been a lot of good work happening over at the collaborative.
What would you say the time is you put into the collaborative?
It's not bad. It's probably two hours a month plus whatever else is required to prepare the materials or to bring the information to you and back. So I'm going to say three hours a month.
So it sounds reasonable.
It is reasonable. And it is an important membership because on occasion, we don't have the right program that fits a particular student with a particular profile of disability. And in those cases, we do rely on those collaborative programs to be able to serve the student appropriately. So it's really an important membership for us.
So do you think they're focusing on these kinds of things are the cause of the steadily increasing enrollment?
Well, I don't think it's suddenly increasing because it actually, the Bi-County enrollment had dipped a little bit in the last few years. And so I think there's been a renewed emphasis on, similar to what we've been doing with Dr. Einzel, is taking a real hard look at the programs that are offered, recreating them or rebuilding them according to the needs of the population. And there are some districts who are sending more students there. It's not our truth, it could be next year, I don't know. It really evolves with the nature of the needs of the students that we serve. So they've got one hundred ninety-four, that's, I'm going to say, within fifteen perhaps. They do also do take temporary referrals. So we may need a student to go into a therapeutic setting for a short period of time for evaluation, and they would, they hypothetically could attend a Bi-County placement for that purpose. So all of their enrollment increase is not always permanent. It's definitely there to meet the needs of the students, whether it's a short period of time or a long period of time. Right? Anything to add to that, Sandra? That's about right.
Thank you for the update. School committee vote to approve the Foxborough Public Schools policy manual.
So this is in the annual event that you people undertake. I think it's a very important one. And I personally, I always will say, I appreciate the policy subcommittee members, Debbie Lord and Tina Bellinger. They have updated this year, thanks to Janet and her notes.
I'm glad you made notes.
Well, that's Janet. I have to say--
Thank you, Janet.
She anticipates.
Remind us.
This is what happens. Janet hands me a sticky note--
Yes.
And says, by the way, if you wanted to know, these--
These are the ones we did.
--policies updated from last year. She's very thorough. And they are a new policy on student absences, which came as a result of a new law and regulation in the state, student conduct and discipline, exclusions and exemptions from school attendance. So these were, I'm going to say challenging because they were very meaty. And how do you change completely your policy to meet a new state law? And it's not just a matter of you as a committee want to do business a little bit differently so you can look at a sentence or a paragraph and say you need it or don't need it. So that's why I think the policies are really important, because when push comes to shove, it is the policies that we fall back on and rely on and that parents in the community should feel comfortable that we adhere to. So it is important work. So thank you.
And I think one of the most important decisions that the school committee made a few years ago was to get masks in to help us redo. And because of that connection, they are very faithful about alerting us to what needs to be flagged or what is new and what we must address.
Very true.
Okay. And these are the policies we've gone through at prior meetings and read and--
Yes.
--second readings and all that. So this is just officially approving them into our--
Yes, Tina did an excellent job of reading this past year.
Yes, she did. I remember the really long one.
How could you forget?
It's hard to forget. Yes, so you have an annual approval of the entire policy manual so that publicly you re-adopt those policies each year.
And by approving it at this meeting doesn't mean if we, something comes up in the next month, if we have to change something--
If only it happened right, we have to start again.
We can amend it as needed. So this is just our annual policy manual approval process.
Any other comments from our policy subcommittee? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve--
I always feel comfortable if the other two make it because we were on the committee.
I know. Well, it's just us today, Debbie.
So I'll make the motion to approve the Foxborough Public Schools policy manual.
I guess I will second that.
Should we make a friendly amendment that says, "Motion to approve the manual you both worked so hard on," or anything like that? No, okay.
It's implied.
Job well done. Job well done, better.
I need two more members.
I'm sorry. You know what they say, if you do a job too well--
I know.
Oh, that's--
You can't get rid of it.
That's a truth.
I was assigned this the first year I became a school committee member, and nobody's let me go yet.
And I like policy.
Oh, she really does. To work with somebody who really loves policy is a treasure.
I'm a lawyer.
All those in favor? Three zero.
Many thanks to the committee for your--
Yes, sincerely, thank you.
Good work.
Because I would be really bad at that job.
It's laborious.
Other matters?
I just have the happy announcements. So World Language and Culture Night, the second annual, if you remember what a rave hit last year's first annual World Language and Culture Night. This is the second annual, Monday, April thirteenth, so it is coming up next week, six to eight p.m. And the theme is peace, P-E-A-C-E, peace the world together with languages. It will be held at Foxborough High School Cafeteria Media Center, again, six to eight p.m., sponsored by the World Language Department, so expect another wonderful night. There has been a lot going on with the music program. So one thing that didn't make it into your packet is the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association Gold Medal Showcase. Many of our performing groups will be performing Saturday, April eleventh, at Symphony Hall in Boston, Massachusetts. And then the other date is in McCamp's Hall in Worcester. Are you doing two dates?
No, that's just, there's two venues.
That's what I thought.
We're on tour during that in Washington, DC, so we're just doing--
That's what I thought. So Saturday, April eleventh, at Symphony Hall. I can't even keep up. I think my answer was, what a hectic summer schedule. Congratulations to two news release jazz bands from Foxborough High School and outstanding performances in the state finals of the Massachusetts Jazz Educators Association Annual Jazz Band Festival in Framingham recently. Foxborough Jazz Lab Band and the Foxborough Jazz Ensemble both awarded gold medals by the judges at the state finals. And both of these excellent jazz bands can be heard at the annual FMA Jazz Fest Friday, May fifteenth, with a special guest artist, nationally known trumpet player Sean Jones. And there is the annual, not to be missed event, Foxborough High School Pops Concert, Saturday, May second, seven p.m., Sunday, May third, at one p.m. And the Jazz Ensemble is traveling to New York City, May seven to ten, to participate in the essentially Ellington High School Band Contest Finals. They are among the fifteen finalists for the top high school jazz bands in the country. This is also the fifteenth time they've been a finalist. So that--
And this is the twentieth year celebration.
It is.
So fifteen out of twenty times--
So that--
Pretty good.
And then the annual MICA Festival. Congratulations to three hundred and fifty student musicians from the Ahern Middle School and Foxborough High School. Outstanding performance is the annual MICA Concert Festival, which was held recently. Oh, let's see, Ahern Seventh and Eighth Grade Concert Choir, bronze medal. Two vocal ensembles from Foxborough High School, that was the former was conducted by Ms. Liana Pinkswell. Foxborough High School, conducted by Mr. Dave Piper. Were both awarded silver medals. Foxborough's instrumental ensembles, the high school ensemble, concert-- wow, there's so many. Silver medals, Ahern Seventh and Eighth Grade String Orchestra, Ms. Kami Tadoli, silver medal. It's all in there. There's a big press release. So they, I don't know how they keep up with their spring schedule. I'm exhausted just reading all about it. But congratulations.
Yeah, that's great. Anything else, Deb?
Day on the Hill, you all got information for the, for the school committee, Day on the Hill. So I think you're going to let Janet know if you want to attend, if you haven't already.
I was actually up at the department today. It's not real encouraging up there.
Is it department meaning?
Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Just, you know, the sense that they're getting is that, and I think you can read this in the newspapers as well, but that the, they're in cut mode right now as opposed to invest mode. And it's even, don't spend to invest or do anything smart, it's really just cut, cut, cut is the sense that the department's getting. So it was interesting. I was there for business, of course, but I just didn't pick up real strong vibes from the way they're feeling on the Hill right now.
I would concur.
But we're fortunate here in town that we're managing prudently and fiscally and--
And we have wonderful school partnerships in this town.
You know, that was a good segue to what I wanted to talk about. I brought this with me, because we all got this, all of us Foxborough residents got this in the mail, the Partners in Patriotism Newsletter. And I went through, last week, I went, I'll give you my copy. But I went through and highlighted all of the different things that the craft group has supported our school system with.
I heard our community warriors are in the other high schools.
So, well, yes, the Partners in Patriotism Fund awarded $25,000 in grants. And among those, two groups associated with our high school, $900 went to the Touchdown Club to assist with the cost of the turkeys at Thanksgiving. Sorry, I'm going to skip over. $500 to the Foxborough High School Community Warriors to assist in funding the group's Meals on Wheels program, which is fantastic. $500 to the Foxborough Soccer Club to assist in establishing a scholarship fund in memory of Foxborough High School graduate Kevin Martin. $2,500 to IGO Cares, which helps provide financial assistance to the IGO Elementary School families in need. Not to mention all the other wonderful things they're doing for other community groups, but those are directly related to our schools.
Well, look at our Go Sixty.
And then, just other unique opportunities that our school students have gotten. There's an article about how the marching band played at the Patriot Pride Night. There is an article in here about an upcoming event, where is it? Sorry, I lost it.
The Community Art.
Ouch. The art contest, the Foxborough Street Painting Festival coming to Patriot Place on May second. I'll let you mention it.
Oh, go right ahead.
All right. I'm just reading that.
That is going to be a fabulous first-time event.
It really is. And I'm just going to read what's written here because they summarize it so nicely. But Patriot Place is expanding its cultural offerings with an exciting new event featuring local artists. On May second, Patriot Place will host its first-ever Foxborough Street Painting Festival featuring student artwork from Foxborough schools and surrounding communities. The festival, in partnership with the Foxborough High School Art Department, will feature local artists of all ages and numerous Patriot Place activities. So it's just fantastic. And also, they're doing, the FHSD student artwork will be on display at the Artist Studio and Gallery from May first through third. So we just have a wonderful community partner.
The Saturday, May second, Street Painting Festival. I just want to tell the community how that came about. So our art department, I want to put in a real plug for our art department. So last year, they went to Providence to participate in the Providence Street Painting Festival.
Right.
And all of our student artists, so you basically, you buy a block and you use chalk to create, think about it, the old sandcastle competition. You go, you create, and then it sort of disappears. So, this is street painting. So, they bought a block, they won an award, wonderful recognition, our student artists, and they loved the event so much, they thought about, why don't we try to do one up here and not just rely on going to Providence? So, the art department started to plan. And then, last summer, right when they came to me with the idea, I also had, I don't think it mentions Dr. Victor Young--
It does, actually, and I didn't read that.
That's okay, so I'm all, I already have up here. So, Dr. Victor Young, who has a local dental business, he had come forward last summer asking, that he's a real lover of the arts, he loves the arts. What could he do for the schools in partnership with the arts? So, we decided to focus on something in the visual arts, and we connected him and met with Kelly Arkasha, our department head. And we met in my office, and he decided to sponsor the Street Painting Festival, because it's a wonderful public event. So, he is actually, I believe, sponsoring two thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars worth of the prizes for different categories. I think it's at least fifteen hundred dollars.
Dr. Young, Dr. Victor Young.
Yes. And he's been a wonderful supporter of the arts, and now a specific activity. So, then, they wanted a nice public venue. So, the people at Patriot Place came forward and said they would be willing to partner, because they certainly have the space, and they have the public relations people to get people out. There's people out and about up there. So, I think it will be, I think it's one of the best triangular partnerships--
That's great.
--that, so we're quite excited about that. So, we've got a local business sponsor, our wonderful art department, and our talented students, and then the people at Gillette and Patriot Place, so--
We're really lucky.
Can't wait. It's a don't-miss event.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else, Tina?
I actually do have one other thing. Your superintendent's coffee is coming up next week.
It is, it is. Tuesday evening.
I thought you might want--
So, we had to cancel, shockingly, due to snow, snowstorm. So, the, we're going to, people can come with any topic or question that they have. So, it's really an open forum, so it's at the public library, six-thirty, next Tuesday. People should come and ask whatever they'd like to talk about, or open any topics. The one topic that I will have at the ready, if we still have time, is our international student program that we're moving forward with. I have lots of news about that, but I'm also going to put it on the next agenda for the school committee to let you know where we are.
Oh, great. I was going to ask that.
Oh, we've had a lot going on with that. Our marketing materials are just about ready. We're about to start recruiting for host families, just to give you a preview. One of our teachers has an opportunity to travel with the company this month to go and start recruiting, which normally the recruiting is virtual. But they have a unique opportunity with an educational agency in China, the largest, who asked for five Massachusetts public high schools to come recruit. So, we're lucky to get one of the slots. So, one of our, World Language Department head's going to go and start--
And where's she going?
I'm sorry, Karen Fraser will be going.
To when?
To China, this month.
This month?
Over the vacation week.
Vacation?
Yes. So, she's giving up her own time, but it'll be great. So, we're really starting with a personal connection with our international student program, and all good things. So, we're just about to pop with that and really get going. So, I'm going to put it on the agenda for next time, and we'll give you a much more detailed description of what's been happening with the Cambridge Institute for International Education and the Mass Preparatory Program.
Great.
We're rolling.
Great. Is that it, Tina?
I'm sure I could come up with something else.
We'll come back, we'll come back to you.
I'll just stop for now. There's a lot of good stuff going. I was thinking, when I drove in tonight, looking at all of the activity on the San Burns community field, how much use our turf field has gotten by the entire community. Because I think just about every child engaged in spring sports has had an opportunity to practice out there over the last few weeks while we wait for our snow.
I was going to make that same comment, being a coach of a couple of teams that's been out there. You know, if anyone questioned the value of that turf field, I think this spring has demonstrated the importance. I mean, forget about just all the youth teams that have been out there, we've been out there. It's the strangest baseball practice I ever had last week at eight P.M. in the fog of the snowbank, under the lights, on a football field, but it was a baseball practice.
He got something done.
Let me guess, your bases might not have been clearly marked?
Bases. And by the way, there were four other teams on the field at the same time. So, that's just our youth sports. But imagine our high school spring sports, if we didn't have the turf field, where would they be? I mean, we are--
Probably wouldn't be, there would be a half season.
They'd be in a gym somewhere. So, I think anyone--
They'd be running in the corridors.
Yeah, so you're right, you're right, Tina. Turf field's been a, turf field's been a godsend in this spring.
It has, yeah.
Okay, Bevy?
Everything is covered. This is great. Musicals, Day on the Hill, international study, I mean, great partnership.
Student representatives.
We just have two short, I guess, like, announcements. The student council is running a fundraiser for progeria on the seventeenth of April, just to let families know, encourage their kids to do so.
What are you doing?
It's called Hats Off for Progeria. So, students pay a certain amount of money to wear a hat that day, because they're not allowed to wear them in school normally, but wear a hat and all the proceeds go to progeria.
That's great.
And then-- Thank you, Mikel, for even mentioning that, because there's so much going on. All five schools are participating in Hats Off for Progeria. So, April seventeenth, it's like pay to wear blue jeans on Friday, but you pay to wear a hat, and we're all doing it, so.
So, do the students get sponsors for this, or do the students pay to do this?
The students pay to do this. So, it's like donating money, and then you also show your support by getting to wear the hat, so.
And the staff will as well. And we actually have just one team, the Foxborough team, that we, that I register us for. So, whatever, all the schools collect will go toward that. So, I think it's a wonderful way for all of us to participate in something together. Another thing I forgot, thank you.
And then, on May second, there's Talent for a Cause, I believe at OA High School, right?
Yeah, Oliver.
And it's, I think, five high schools, their student councils or whoever, they get three people from, three groups of each, I'm not really sure.
Of each high school, I think, yeah. Three acts of each high school to participate.
And then, what, and then whatever the cause, do you know what the cause is?
Um, yes, it's for the, it's to send money to our troops, I think. I think it goes to our troops.
And last year was for progeria, and then this year it's for the troops.
Nice. If anyone wants to go and see that, this is May second, seven P.M.
We'll be selling tickets, I believe, here.
Excellent.
Great. Anything else?
Thank you.
Well, isn't that the--
That's the street painting.
And the street painting.
That's a lot going on there.
Lot to go to on Saturday, May second.
Yes.
You won't be bored.
Lock your calendar. Thank you, guys, for chiming in. Anytime you have things you'd like to add, you know. Amy?
What's that?
Bill?
What's that?
Janet? Did we forget anything?
Got it. It's my sticky note.
The only thing, the only other thing I want to do is, I wanted to acknowledge and thank our two candidates for our open seat, for their investing time, Mr. Thomas and Mrs. Weiss, who are here, and let the community know that they are investing their time, and really appreciate that you guys have come out to contribute, and I wish you the best of luck. So, thank you.
The one other thing on May second is the seven o'clock pops. So, you can paint, and you can raise money, and you can enjoy music all in the same day.
Which I'm planning to, just some outfit changes in between.
Do like I do, sleep in the back of the car and go from--
Yeah, well--
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
Motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
I will second that motion.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Good night.